Board of Trustees for Pasadena Area Community College. Come to order at this time. Ms. Thompson, please call the robe.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Wa?
Here.
Dr. Mann?
Present.
Dr. Fellow. Mr. Martin. Dr. Selvage?
Here.
Mr. Thompson. Ms. Ba.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Our closed session agenda is as follows. We have three items. The first one is Code 54957.6. Collective Bargaining PCC California Federation Teacher. Lead negotiator is Dr. Robert B. Miller, Assistant Superintendent. The second item is Code 54957.6. Collective Bargaining PCC slash Faculty Association. Lead negotiator is Robert Bell, Dr. Robert Bell, Assistant. I'm sorry.
Miller.
Dr. Robert Miller.
Too many.
Did I say? Let's make that correction. Dr. Miller, Assistant Superintendent. And the final one is Government Code 54957. Employee Discipline Dismissal Release Separation One Employee. Anyone in the audience doesn't seem to have anyone that wishing to attend to address the agenda, closed agenda, no? So.
I'm just trying to rehearse what I want to say at the front.
We're back from closed session, and I would like to inform you that we had no action items to report out tonight. So trustee Barnes, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Of course. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have any recognition? First, let me thank you for joining us tonight in our Board of Trustees. Always good to have you here. Thank you. Okay, do we have any introductions?
Yes, we do have in the audience. It is my pleasure to introduce trustee-elect Mr. Jim Osterling and trustee-elect Mr. Hoyt Hilsman.
For Hoyt? Okay, all right.
Welcome.
Thank you. Do we have any?
We have no comment cards.
No comment.
Is that correct, Ms. Thompson? There's no comment cards right now.
Okay, so if that's the case, we will move on to the approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last. We have, okay, we have a motion by trustee Mann in a second, by trustee Wa. Advisor vote?
Aye.
All in favor for approving the minutes as read?
Aye.
Minutes. Okay, so we dispass unanimously. We will go now to approval of consent items. Do we have, do any trustee have an item to be considered for separate votes? We have one from trustee Mann.
I would like to, I don't want to consider for separate vote, but I'd like to comment on 54P and 55P.
54P.
Uh huh.
And 55 what?
P.
Okay, we do have one. We have a revision. I imagine you've been looking at me. Oh, go ahead. You had one too?
Actually, two. 104B and 111B.
104B and what?
111B.
Okay, so before we vote on the remaining, and then we'll take these separately, I would like to announce that. We had a revision in, I guess it's consent, 105B, right? And then which are, okay, so should I read it? I think that's the one for, yeah, Sarah B. Blasio, right? We changed it from two-year contract to, from five-year contract to two-year contract.
Which one are you on?
105B. Okay, it was changed. So you do have a copy in your brown folder.
Okay.
So let's vote on all the consent items excluding the ones that were called out, which was 104B, 54, and 51. Is that correct? That's the one?
104, 111, 105, 111, 54.
Okay, so.
I want us, I want us to go ahead and vote on 54. I just want to make a comment about them that we can vote on.
Okay.
My, my comment is that 54 is the retirement of Jerry McGill from, who, after 24 years service. And I know many of us know him very well, and he has made a big contribution to the college. And the other one is the retirement of Beverly Knapp after 26 years' service at the CEC and Admission and Records. And I think we all want to compliment these very loyal and dedicated employees.
Thank you, Dr. Mann. That's a very good point. Okay, so now we will vote on all agenda items except for 104B, which is what Dr. Selvage wants. And the other one is which one?
11.
111B. Okay, so excluding those, we have a motion by trustee Wa to approve, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a second by trustee Mann. Advisor vote?
Aye.
All in favor to approve?
Aye.
Okay, now we will go to 104B. Trustee Selvage?
Right, this is, I guess this is an $8.6 million increase augmentation to the budget. And it has to do with.
It's an $8,619.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Gave me a little heart attack, too, so.
Right, okay, I was, oh, I'll tell you what. We can avoid the confusion if we eliminate the cents number.
Okay.
You know, you know, 69, top of column, it says amount on the second page, 69, 537, and then it says, and zero cents.
Okay, got you. Thank you, sir.
A formatting suggestion, then. Okay.
And the other one?
Number 11. 111. Yeah, this is a sole-source contract, and I understand that sometimes it's necessary to, inappropriate to do sole-source, but what sort of scale of a contract would we have under this sole-source? I mean, what kind of dollars? Are we talking about something that could be a $50,000 contract or a million and a half?
On the Lexmark Enterprise Software. Does someone have a number on that, Cynthia?
Or just kind of ballpark?
Yeah, round number. I have a number in mind, but I want to make sure it's stated correctly.
Trustee Selvage, that product typically ranges in the dollar amount of $190,000 to $230,000.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Actually, it's a statement. So I'm happy with 111, and I asked the superintendent about it in advance, and I understand the necessity, but I can't let the moment pass without a comment. We, for 10 years prior to the Banner system, we, the college and the board, set up a priority to slowly put money aside for Banner or for a comprehensive do-all, be-all, end-all, one system where everything talked to each other. We had Santa Rosa Gold, bless its heart, for such a long time with Bertha or whatever the HP computer was named that we all lived with for some many years. So now I'm seeing for the first time a non-Banner, separate piece of software coming back in. And I see after 20 years of, and working towards a single piece of integrated software, I am just have a little bit of concern that now we have an outside product. So I guess it would give me comfort to, for someone to tell me how well it integrates with Banner through SQL or whatever means you use to do that, and just give me a little reassurance, I'm not going to stop the train that's on the track, but I have to enlighten this moment with a historical perspective.
If I may start before Dr. Levo does. The Banner system does have a Banner imaging system. The problem with the system is it doesn't actually interpret what it scans, and that the Lexmark system is much better in relation to the kinds of services we need to provide our students. It was a question that we asked before we did this, a question that was asked several times, and at the end of the day, we conceded to do this. I checked with our IT people a couple of times on this, and they feel that the integration is one that is relatively seamless, and it is just another item they're going to have to deal with over time, but in terms of student access and success, this was, this is a good decision. Dr. Levo?
Sure, just to enlighten the rest of the public that may be listening to this, this product that we are seeking to purchase with this contract would allow us to provide intelligent scanning for external transcripts that students submit to the college. So at this time, it requires actual people to review every transcript to determine which courses are meeting specific requirements. Well, there's a technological solution for that, and that's Perceptive by Lexmark. So you scan a transcript, it'll automatically read and populate which requirement the student has completed. Many universities and colleges around the country have this. I came from a university that had this product, and we were a PeopleSoft school. So enterprise resource systems do not provide every solution for every problem. They do provide solutions to integrate the business side of the house with the academic side of the house and the student services side of the house, but they do not provide the specific solutions for things like external transcript reading. So this product is in place at Santa Monica College. They've used their Triple SPN Student Equity Funds to purchase it. Mount SAC went in a different direction, although it's still a product that does the same function. And Ventura Area Community College District also purchased a similar product. So I think that we're on trend with our peers who are using their Triple SPN equity dollars to provide this valuable service to our students and to bolster the support that Banner can provide us.
But it is something we can maintain and deal with long-term.
So once that has occurred, and I understand the efficiency there, is there data then that is repopulated back into the main Banner system? Or is that data of knowing what they've qualified for or not sitting in its own system separate?
It'll populate to the DegreeWorks system, which was a purchase we made when we went in contract with Banner.
Which is a Lucian Banner product, yes. So it will, it will live on our mainframe and be part of our permanent record in a relatively seamless way.
And if, if something were to change in a student who went out and took one more class and had it scanned back in, then it's not a double entry that would get repopulated electronically through the magic of?
No. The product would be set up such that it would populate the requirement field that it takes care of.
Trustee Wa.
So I'm not uncomfortable bringing in another software to integrate. I think it's quite common. I think it's kind of a false sense of comfort that many people have when we, when you purchase an ERP and you think it's the silver bullet and it's the overall solution. So it's quite common, I think, to bring in another solution as long as it integrates. So my question is, when Banner was brought to us as the ERP solution, we were told that something 80 out of 113 community colleges have this. So, so how well, then how many of those, this large percentage of colleges that has already implemented Banner as their ERP solution also integrate with this Lexmark solution?
You know, I don't have the exact answer to that, but, you know, I did inquire quite a bit about, did Banner have a similar solution? And their solution is just basically an imaging solution. It's not a reading of the data and dropping in solution. But as Dr. Levo mentioned, there are several districts that have gone with the Lexmark product in order to effectuate, the goals need to effectuate. I don't know what the Mount SAC version is, but there's probably not too many vendors out there who provide this, this type of product.
Correct.
And Banner does not, unfortunately.
Right. So I don't want to second-guess the technology recommendation that was probably made by the IT people, but, you know, it would be, it's always good to know how many people, you know, how well does this solution work for the majority? And if there are other solutions that other people are using, why weren't we looking at those? I mean, why is that not a solution for us? So I don't want to make this a big deal, but I think that any time you bring in a second one, you always, another piece, you always want to know how well it integrates and is it what the majority of other customers are using because instead of us reinventing the wheel.
There, there has been extensive research conducted by Mark Gutierrez from the ITS folks. He sent out an email to the ITS directors across the state. He also met with his peers at a regional meeting. And then the Director of Admissions and Records, Susan Bricker, did the same thing with the A&amp;R ListServe and also met with directors in the regional meeting. And then when Dean Armando Duran and myself were at Sacramento with the 112 Student Equity and Triple SP coordinators, we also vetted the product with our peers.
But I think it's still a fair question that trustee Wa is asking. Mark, do you have any particular details on the percentage of districts that are using this particular product?
I do know that. There's two or three. I'm just.
Okay, but we understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Levo. So what's the pledge of the board? Should we, do I have a motion to approve 104? Let's go by 104 first.
Well, I'd move approval of 104 and 111B.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
That was trustee Selvage. Okay, we have a first one, trustee Martin, and a second by trustee Selvage. Advisor vote?
Aye.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously to approve these remaining two items. Okay, now we will go to our action items. We will start with, oh, the calendar. Approval of the calendar.
111B.
No, we didn't.
We have to substitute this page with the page that you have in your folder.
That's right. You have in your folder, you have a different calendar.
A different calendar?
It was revised.
No, it's the same calendar, except that it was a minor revision with one date there.
Right.
So, Dr. Wa.
I'm going to ask Dr. Bell to guide us here, because you chaired the committee.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bird. Ladies and gentlemen, the calendar you have before you operationally is the same. The new version has the same as was presented in your board packet. The only change is for the winter intercession. The corrected calendar shows that the last day of classes for the winter intercession will be February 16, 2017, and February 17 will be the first day of the President's Day break, so the campus will be closed. The previous version that we gave you showed that the last day of the winter intercession was, in fact, the 17th, and that was incorrect. So we moved the last day of the winter intercession instruction from the 17th of February to the 16th of February. Other than that, everything is exactly the same.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any questions? Just the Wa.
So I asked this question, and just for the benefit of all who are in attendance. So the questions I asked were, how does this change affect any of the transfers? So now we're now, it's a later date, starting date, will it affect any of the transfers? And with Cal State's now turning to semester systems, is there any impact to our students on this?
There will be no impact on our students at all, because the spring semester grades don't count towards transfer decisions that CSUs and UCs make. Those grades will be turned in at the appropriate time. Usually, they have through the end of July to turn their spring semester grades in.
So, and the other question I have, because I think this was something that was quite worrisome to the board when the calendar issue was raised, was the long gap between the ending of the fall session and then the beginning of the spring session. So I'm looking at this, and it still looks like it's a fairly long gap. So are we no longer concerned about the persistence because of this gap?
Well, we have information, we provided you data that we have showing you the retention and persistence, and also the number of students who from the fall semester will be taking the winter intercession, and how many of those students who take winter intercession will be taking the spring semester classes. And we have also shown you the number of similar sections being offered by the neighboring colleges which have winter intercessions. And our understanding is that it does not have any negative impact on persistence, retention, or successful completion, either in the spring semester or in the fall semester, for those students who don't take the winter intercession.
So I looked at the data, and it does show that, but I guess, you know, so my concern is, you know, last year when we discussed this, the information that was given back to the board was, we did feel that there was, that persistence did deteriorate when there were these long gaps. So my only caution, if you have data that shows there is nothing, that this does not harm our students, it does not deteriorate the persistence, I would just say that, that for next year, you know, let's keep an eye on this, let's keep a close watch, because I certainly would be concerned if persistence did drop.
We will collect all the appropriate data. We will collect data as soon as we start that process in the winter intercession of 2017. We will be collecting all the data, and we will make sure that we bring those data to the board, sometimes during the summer of 2017, when we have the final grades for the spring semester of 2017 out. We will bring the data to show the fall data, fall 2016, winter intercession 2017, spring 2017. We will bring you the persistence, the retention, the successful completion. We will also follow the students that are from spring that are taking the classes in the winter intercession, the students who don't take the winter intercession, the students who go straight from spring to, I mean, I mean, from fall to spring without taking the intercession. We will give you their success rates, we will give you their raw numbers, we will provide all the numbers to the board to take a look at it as we move forward with this.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Mann?
Well, I'm glad to see this data. We had asked, I think, for something similar, and I just have a couple of points I want to make to make sure we're reading these charts right. If you, the percentage of winter session students who are enrolled at PCC the preceding fall semester indicates that most of the students who take classes here in the winter session are not our students. They were not enrolled in the preceding fall. 2012, 23 percent. 2010, 27 percent. 2004, 30 percent. And this was what we had been told before. Most of these classes are filled with students from CSU and Cal State, which was one of the questions I'd always had, is why we're having a winter intercession, which our students are not enrolled? If I'm misreading that, then I would like to be corrected, but it says percentage of winter session students who are enrolled at PCC the preceding fall, 2012, 23. Less than a quarter of the students enrolled were PCC students. So I think that's something we wanted to look at very, very carefully. And the other thing I think we ought to look at very carefully, I won't be here, but I hope someone will look at it, is our students who are not college-ready, according to research, which I saw as part of the Student Success Task Force, do worse with these extended breaks. So when you do the breakout, we often have breakouts of students who are college-ready and students who weren't college-ready. We often see that. I hope these persistent rates and all these will be broken out between college-ready students and students who are not college-ready. And if the, if there is a negative effect on the students who are not college-ready, I think that's something that we need to be made aware of.
We will definitely take the advice you are giving us into consideration. We will collect that data, and the vice presidents and assistant superintendents will be using all that information as we conduct negotiations in the future about the winter intercession.
Anyone else have a question or a comment regarding? Go ahead, trustee Selvage.
To follow up a little bit on trustee Wa's comment about the break. Now, there's three weeks from the end of the fall semester until the winter intercession begins in January. I mean, that's just over the holiday period, so that's not the break we're talking about. We're talking about those three weeks plus the six weeks, so we're talking about nine weeks.
That's right.
Now, you know, I got the, the charts and everything, but there wasn't any narrative, so I went over it. I'm not sure that I picked up on all the implications of these various charts. The one down at the bottom of the front page with the bar charts here shows the fall-to-spring persistence increased after the winter intercession was dropped.
Yes, it does.
Yeah. So. But.
We're doing this because we were told to by a board. It doesn't mean that this is the best for our students.
That's right.
Well, I know why we're doing it. I'm just asking for interpretations of the data that.
We will provide you all that information. We will be collecting all that. We will be making sure we provide you all that information, and we will be using that information as we conduct negotiations in the following, that semester, that winter intercession, as we conduct negotiations with the faculty on the future of the winter intercession.
Okay, and to provide a little sort of context for the.
And we will do that as well.
Okay, to provide some context, there's a Table 2, section counts during the winter intercession, and I go down to Pasadena and we have 341 in winter 10, 389 the next year, 271, and then we stopped. How do those section numbers compare? What percentage of the number of sections we offer during a semester does that constitute?
Dr. Bell, do you have that information?
You know, ballpark, ballpark. Is it, is it 15 percent?
About 10 percent.
About 10 percent.
About 10 to 12 percent.
10 to 12.
And how does that compare with what we might expect if we didn't have the winter intercession, but if we had two summer sessions?
Well, we've had two or three summer sessions, so.
And what, we offered sections.
Do you have the data, Dr. Miller?
What I can say is, is that when we didn't have the winter intercession and post Prop-30 situation, we just moved those sections into other terms. We had something called an extended spring. We had larger summer sections and what have you. So we offered the same, we offered normal number of sections and more in order to deal with the restoration needs, but, but we just didn't have the winter intercession. We just shifted those sections.
Right.
Okay.
Couple of years, well, I've been on the board for two years. This was done, what, three and a half years ago or so? The decision was made to drop it. When I was campaigning, I heard a lot about this, because it was a pretty high-profile event, shall we say. I asked about what the rationale was for doing it, and I was given various reasons apart from just, well, we can't pay for winter intercession, which seemed to be the precipitant reason. But I was told that it was more costly per course to offer, per student, to offer the instruction in the winter intercession.
Well, it's slightly more costly on the basis of our contracts with our Faculty Association for adjunct salaries, which often take on, they are actually what we pay for overload typically, slightly more expensive. But again, typically, you know, currently in a fall or spring, we're offering 2,500 to 2,600 sections. In, in the winter, at our peak, we offered like 630 or so. But normally, in recent years, we've been in the 200 to 300 range, which is a relatively small of the total that we offer every year. Which is about 6,000 sections, give or take.
Okay, and final question, are there particular courses that we just stay away from in the winter intercession because it's so short and there are ways in which you can teach certain types of courses? Some of them really just take longer for material to sink in.
Well, if it is a six-week intercession, you can teach practically most courses. If it is a four-week intercession, it becomes a problem for some courses, but in a six-week, it's, you can teach practically anything.
When I was teaching at SC, I taught a summer session, six weeks. It was a four-unit course, and I told them, don't ever do it again.
We, that is, that is true, because courses last much longer. You'll be coming at the class, you'll start the class at 8:00. You will go from 8:00 to 1:30 or 8:00 to 2:00, four days a week. I mean, in a literature class, it means that you'll be reading your eight or nine textbooks in, in six weeks. In a science class, you will be doing lab for hours and hours and hours, because you have to make up the same number of hours. And I see trustee, student trustee Kelly Ban is going like that, because she knows she, you have experienced that, I believe, right, trustee Ban?
Yes.
Then again, my, my first course at PCC was a summer physics course, and I went back and looked at the catalogs in the library from the year I was here. That was six weeks.
Thank you. Okay, so trustee Martin?
I mean, I share some of the same concerns on why we didn't have a winter.
I mean, I share some of the same concerns on why we didn't have a winter intercession, but the point is, it's been decreed that this is now going to get turned over to a collective group on the campus. So I think we have to turn it over. I don't think, I mean, as much as I think the data isn't good for me to know, it's more important for them to know what the data is and how it should be interpreted, so that the collective group can decide whether they do or don't want a winter intercession. And if there was additional costs or concerns like that, they have to get negotiated and mitigated and work through collectively. That's the whole point. So, you know, this is wonderful information. This is about some of the best information on winter we've had in all the many long, arduous discussions we've had on winter. This is some of the best information, but giving it to us now, it's just good information.
Yeah, I just want to again point out that, looking at the data, of all the years we had the winter session, at least two-thirds or three-quarters of the students who were in winter session were not our students. So I do not see that this is a major contribution to student success, which is really my concern. Several years ago, we were offering calculus in the summer. Well, five sessions of calculus filled by students from UC and CSU, and we realized we were the only college, not alone community college, offering calculus in the summer. We decided it wasn't our obligation to teach every college student in the LA Basin calculus. So again, these, in the past, based on this data, winter intercession has not contributed or has not served our students, although it has served other students in the LA Basin. And I think that's a factor we need to think about, although I know we have to do this because we've been told that we have to do it. But I think we just need, people need to know this, and the people in our district who pay taxes and we get our funding for property taxes need to know that the winter session has never served the students who are regular PCC students.
Okay. Go ahead, trustee Thompson.
Just to pick up on what Janice said, I think that the major issue here that we really need to focus on is, what is best for student success?
Right.
Is it the six-week winter intercession, or is it some other arrangement? And I know that, for example, if you're taking a calculus class or some other math class, some students learn well by taking it four or five days out of the week. Some don't. And so I think we need to look at factors such as that and decide, is it going to be in negotiations we're having? Is this something that is really the better approach for our students, or is the better approach not to have a winter intercession? And I realize that's something that has to be negotiated with the other organizations on campus, but I think that has to be the key focus of those discussions.
Okay. So let me put my two cents in. I pretty much don't really agree with a lot that was said, because I remember going to come in here and taking some classes, which I failed in the summer, no, in the fall, I barely made maybe about a D, and then I took the winter intercession and was able to make up what I did not get through and pass the class. So you have to, you know, we have to take the whole thing in perspective. It's a good discussion. I wouldn't say that we are not serving our students in our community, because I think that's pretty much hard to really say. Yeah, we do have a lot of students that do come or find either here or Glendale or wherever to get the classes that they need, but the bottom line, we're here to serve students, as far as I'm concerned. After all, what, we got 60, 80 percent of our students come from our district, so 7 to 6 percent. So, that being said, I think we really have to depend on faculty now to decide how they want to, you know, offer winter intercession. They will come up with a plan, we will just facilitate the fact that now it's on the calendar, now we're in compliance as at 2017, and we'll go forward. So this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept this calendar.
Aye.
Okay. I heard a aye. Where is that aye from?
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Salvage.
Second.
Do we have a second by trustee Martin?
Yeah, I think the motion is to approve it rather than to accept it, because we are the decision-makers.
Motion to approve.
Oh, what did I say?
To accept.
Oh, to approve, I'm sorry. Okay, so we have a motion already and a second. Advisor vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have approved this calendar. Thank you, and we'll move on to Item G, approval of and deletions of credit and non-credit curriculum. President Verdine.
Dr. Bell?
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, as we have done before, we are bringing to you those classes which have moved through our curricular review process and curriculum instruction. These are courses which are being added to the curriculum and courses which are being deleted from the curriculum. The rationale for both appear in your board packet. And so again, these are recommendations from the faculty which have come from, through the Curriculum Instruction Committee.
Okay. Do we have any comments, anyone? Yes, trustee?
I would like to comment. I really appreciated the additional information that you gave, put in context with each department area. I think that was extremely helpful, so I have no questions this time. From the first time, I haven't had questions about the curriculum.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Waugh?
I want to echo Dr. Mann's comment. This is very helpful. I particularly liked where you gave the bright outlook on the occupations. I still didn't see where the bright outlook, though, linked to our own regional industry trends, and so I just want to make sure that we are also looking at how, what we're, what these, how this curriculum contributes back to our own workforce.
I have Dean Solomon Davila would give us some more information on that.
Hi, good evening, trustee. The bright outlook is actually from an ONET. It is a national database regarding the actual occupations that faculty are aligning to. That is meant to be an information, so how to develop the knowledge, skills, and abilities, how they develop their learning outcomes for those courses. I do help them individually with labor market as they propose programs specifically to the regional consortia, which is attached to their proposals. That is not included in that specific blurb that you're referring to in there, but it is part of a proposal to the Chancellor's Office, that the labor market, local labor market is attached to any new certificates or alternations to those, alternative certificates to their proposals to the consortia. If you want specifics in each courses, that would be something that we may discuss in CNI for the specific courses in the labor market.
I, that's not necessary for me. I just want to make sure that the college is looking at how we are positively contributing with our graduation, how we are graduating students who have the skills that are meeting our own regional labor markets. So one of the, part of the conversation that we've been having at the state level on the workforce development and with the whips, even statewide, have been that we need to work more closely with the labor market, so that we have better disaggregated data to help us focus what we're doing. So that's my only comment.
The data is getting cleaner and clearer, how we're meeting that almost every year here in California. The Launch Board 2.0 is coming in January, which will allow our, any community colleges to track our own students within the labor market and how they're attaining the job and employment, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
The data is coming.
Any other?
Just a quick comment. So I appreciate it, I asked the superintendent, gave me the answer, but just as a quick comment, so when it says we're deleting ARC welding, welding 150B, if the rationale were to say it's taught as part of another course, that would help me, because then I know without asking, it's not like we're eliminating ARC welding, we're just eliminating this course. So in several of these, my biggest concern is, doesn't it mean we're eliminating ARC, you know, doesn't it mean we're eliminating Microsoft Access? Doesn't it mean we're eliminating some of these things? And the answer is usually no, it's just embedded in a different course and a different sequence. So if you were to include that in the justification, it would sure make me feel more at ease. And there might be a time where there's something you are eliminating, because it's not a priority of the college, then I would know that.
Well, trustee Martin, I can assure you that from now on, whenever we do those deletions, I'm going to ask Dr. Scott to have CNI include that statement in the paperwork that we submit, that ARC welding, this ARC welding 105 is being eliminated, but the content of this course are currently, are now offered in ARC welding 175.
If it is.
Whatever, yeah, right. So we will, thank you.
Great.
Okay, trustee Salvage?
Right. On the first page of this Item G, it talks about, under the background, additions and deletions, then we have all the ones that are under the heading additions, but it says archived, is that the same thing as deleted, deletion?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
What was that? Did you ask a question? You got your answer?
Oh, yeah, I got it. I'm sorry, I answered, I'm sorry, trustee.
Oh, that was quick. I didn't see that answer. Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, for approval.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Waugh.
Second.
Do we have a second by trustee Salvage? Advisor vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried unanimously. Okay. Let's go now to Item H, adoption.
It's the approval of the tentative agreement between the Community College District and the California Federation of Teachers, and that's the collective bargaining agreement 7114 through 630, 2017.
So do we have any discussion? Questions? No discussion?
Move to approve.
Oh, so we have a motion by trustee Martin and a second by trustee Waugh. Advisor vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval granted, okay.
Quick statement, please, if I may, just a quick statement. So you said it, some of the other board members expressed it privately, but we're just all very pleased with the teams that are meeting and appreciative. I think Dr. Miller on this one might have been part of the point on the district side, but everybody in the teams, it's just nice that people are talking and working things out and coming to answers and so, and I know we all kind of haven't been expressing that amongst ourselves, but I thought we ought to just get some recognition on the tape about it, so thank you.
Thank you so much for bringing it out. I did it in private, but I forgot to do it in public. Thank you. Okay, so now we'll go to Item I.
And this one is the approval of the memorandum of understanding between the California Federation of Teachers and the Community College District regarding the holidays for the 2014 and 2015 academic year.
Okay, any discussion? If not, I'll take an approval.
And if I may, just for the clarity of the record, it's California Federation of Teachers, but this is our classified union representative, so this is, this is part of the agreement that you just approved.
Thank you. So we have a motion by trustee Waugh.
Second.
Second by trustee Mann. Advisor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion approved, and we will move to J.
And this one is the approval of the memorandum of understanding regarding social sciences and English class sizes, again, this time between the Community College District and the Faculty Association.
Man, you guys have really been working. Okay, so do we have, first, do we have any questions? Comments? If not, we'll take a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by trustee Waugh and a second by trustee Martin. Advisor vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Signal, okay, motion carried. Did everyone, yes?
Yeah, it sounded like one to nothing, but...
I know, as well as the law, yes.
I think we were...
All right, so now we'll go to our Board of Trustees Self-Assessment. We will turn this over to trustee Waugh. The chair.
Thank you. So this subcommittee was made up of trustee fellow and trustee Thompson, myself. We developed the, we developed this self-assessment, which was approved a couple of months ago. And so this is the results of it. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to go over it. One of the things that I've noticed, and I talked to President Brown about this, is, you know, we should note those items where we had 50 percent or less, or 50 percent or more, I guess, disagreement, where we did not think that we were doing well. And I think that that signals areas that, that we as trustees have agreed, that we feel these are areas that we need to work on. As I was going through the self-assessment, I, I think the themes are really better communication and increasing our own adherence to our own policies and a better understanding of what the policies and procedures are for the trustees to follow and making sure that everyone is on board. So those are the things I noticed, and I don't know if anyone else had any other comments to make or observations.
Okay, anyone have any comments?
No comments?
Hmm, interesting. So you guys did look at this self-assessment?
Well, I did.
Right? No, I did. Well, let me just say to you that the committee that met was, met with, actually, I was part of the, I wasn't part of your committee that put this together, but how come I ended up meeting with you then? Was that part of the...
Because I like you and I asked you.
Okay, so anyhow, I guess maybe because I was called to meet with Dr. Verdine and all, and Dr. Mann and myself, but after we discussed the evaluation, we had a few concerns because it's clear that we do have some areas that we must improve as a board. And one of the things that we sort of talked about was the possibility, and I'm here to ask the board, the possibility of us having an early retreat and maybe asking Dr. Verdine to identify someone to come and facilitate a good, you know, someone knowledgeable that can help us in the areas that are, that were weakened, so we could become a better board, because that is our intention. We don't need to have, we don't need to be having areas of concerns. So how do you feel about that? Go ahead.
I think that that is, that's something I would certainly be supportive of. I think we have two new trustees who will be coming on, on board, so they'll be going through orientation, and this is a good opportunity for us to come together as a board as a whole for 2016, 17, and look at ways that we can work better together. I mean, there were certainly, there were splits in some of our, the perceptions of how we do things. There were certainly some comments, I think, that were made in this evaluation that show there's maybe not total satisfaction with how we are doing things and how we could do some things better. So I think it's a, it's a good way for us to start off with the new board members and the old board members coming together.
Okay, any other comment? Trustee Salvage, do you...
What's the schedule for the trustee? Not indoctrination.
Retreat?
No.
Orientation.
Orientation, right. I think the retreat ought to come after the, after the trustees have gone through the orientation.
Which, which, you're talking about the new trustee orientation?
Right.
Oh, well, yeah, that would be a given, but we need to engage someone. The suggestion is to get your approval, so Dr. Verdine could begin looking to find someone to, to facilitate this retreat. So, yeah, definitely, you're absolutely right, we will have the orientation first.
Yeah, last year, we had a woman who's a trustee in North Orange County, right?
Well, we will, we will have Dr. Verdine find. If we approve, we, he sees, he has looked at this self-evaluation, assessment evaluation, and he see where we are lacking, and I will leave it up to him, if we approve, to find the person that he see fit that could help us through this process. So would you be in favor of that?
Oh, certainly.
How about trustee Martin?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. Trustee Waugh is okay with it? About, oh, trustee Brown is okay? Okay, so then we will, we all agree then that we will ask Dr. Verdine to, as we proceed and move forward, to try to find someone for us.
I will definitely do that, and I will bring to your attention at least two names, and at that point, we can pick the person that will come and do that. And we will do it immediately after the orientation, and... I will definitely do that, and I will bring to your attention at least two names, and at that point, we can pick the person that will come and do that, and we will do it immediately after the orientation, and we will not be able to do the orientation until about the third, at the third or the fourth week of January, because one of the trustee-elect is traveling and starting December first and will not be back till the twenty-first of January. So hopefully, we can have two Saturdays in a row. One Saturday, we'll do the orientation of the new trustees, and everybody will be welcome to attend that orientation, which could also be a refresher course on the role of the trustees. We will be using information from CCLC, and I have asked Dr. Ryan Corner to put together that orientation package. And then immediately following that, the following Saturday or two Saturdays after that, we will have the facilitator that we will have identified come to hold the board retreat.
Great, thank you, Dr. Verdine. Okay, so now we'll move on to superintendent president report.
Well, I must say that I have been at PCC for almost five months now, and I have enjoyed.
Congratulations!
Oh, yes, and I have enjoyed my time here very much, but today was particularly a very special day. As you know, we are moving towards meeting our faculty obligation number for the fall of two thousand sixteen, and as an institution, we need to hire forty-nine point thirty-seven new faculty to meet the fund, but we can't have point thirty-seven of a faculty, so we've decided to go to fifty. And the college worked towards that, there were about ninety-five requests that came forward from the divisions where the deans and the faculty were working together to submit their requests. The deans had done their ranking of the ninety-five or ninety-six positions, and the faculty under the leadership of Senate President Valerie, Dr. Valerie Foster, did their ranking also of those positions, and we had thirty-six positions that were in the top fifty that overlapped both the dean's ranking and the faculty's ranking. And today, this morning, we met to look at the remaining fourteen positions, and I am happy to report, and that was probably the best day I've, of, I, I have enjoyed my time here, but today was a great event, a great moment, when we met with the faculty prioritization group, within one hour, we had a very collegial, cordial meeting, we discussed the positions, and we knew that we would not reach agreement, hundred percent, but we disagreed in a very collegial manner. We had explanations for everything that we did, we had justifications, and we had data to support all the statements we were making, and I'm happy to report that we left that meeting, we have now a list of fifty positions that the college will be flying.
Wow.
And the Division of Human Resources will be working very hard, because we will be competing against thirty-five other colleges in Southern California, and statewide, we'll be competing against one hundred, one hundred and twelve other colleges, and this is a banner year for the community college system in California. There will be probably about two thousand positions being flown across the state of California. And trustees, if you are free on, I believe, the twenty-third or the twenty-fourth of January, this, the third Saturday of January, and if you want to see what it is like to be at a community college job fair, be present at the Hilton LAX, and you will find there about one hundred fifty colleges advertising more than two thousand positions, and Pasadena City College will be represented there, we will have a hospitality suite to give our deans and our faculty who are present an opportunity to interact with job seekers. So I must say, it was a wonderful day. I was very proud to be a lancer and to reach this kind of agreement this early in the morning. And last Saturday was another great day at PCC. Trustee Brown, you were here, we had, early in the morning, we welcomed more than two thousand one hundred middle and high school students for the Adelante Young Men's Conference, which was put together under the leadership of Ms. Stella Morga, and it gives us great hope that the, our future is in good hands when we have two thousand one hundred-plus young middle school and high school students giving up their Saturday morning to be here at seven-thirty, to listen to college faculty and staff talking to them about going to college. And the keynote speaker that morning was the newly-elected fourth-term mayor.
Yes.
Of trustee Martin's very own area, El Monte, Mr. Andre Quintero. I'm also, my colleagues here were very pleased also to see much of our community included in the open house for the Health Sciences Program at the Community Education Center last week. Last Monday, I was able to visit with the Pasadena City Council, and I talked to them a little bit about how PCC has always been open for business in Pasadena, and that how we have touched the lives of thousands and thousands of residents of this area. Last week, I had an opportunity to go to Washington DC to visit with a lot of people there, to make sure that they know that Pasadena City College exists, and that any time they have a question to ask about community colleges, instead of turning to other colleges across the nation, they should be calling Pasadena City College, the number-one community college in California. I must say that I was very impressed with the conversations I had with Ms. Alejandra Sierra from the White House Initiative for Hispanic Students Initiative, and with also with Mr. Achille Vora, the White House Representative on the Asian Pacific Initiative. And I did report to some of you that with the reauthorization of the Higher Education Act, there is a possibility that there will be a bipartisan piece of legislature that will be introduced in both the House of Representatives and the Senate to make it possible for institutions of higher learning that are both HSIs and APIs to apply for both grants, for both types of grants, and not having to worry that if they get one, they are not going to get the other one. Our understanding is our very own Congresswoman Judy Chu will be sponsoring that legis, piece of legislation, and Pasadena City College, I must say, I was very proud last Friday to send a letter of support in the name of Pasadena City College to Congresswoman Judy Chu, who will make that a part of the piece of legislation that she will be presenting. Now, if that goes through and the Higher Education Reauthorization Act is approved, there will be money set aside for HSIs and APIs. Of course, there will be, the amount will be less for the APIs, but thirty-five percent of all the monies will be reserved for small colleges and universities, because they will not be able to compete against huge institutions like Pasadena City College, because by our sheer numbers, we will dwarf them. And we will receive a letter directly from API, from the Department of Education, telling us that we qualify for the grants and we need to apply for it. We won't have to justify our title. Some other good things happening at the college, you know that this morning, we hosted more than three hundred fifty Pasadena Unified School District high school students who are engaged in our dual enrollment program. I was very happy to see them on campus. Thank you, Dr. Olivo, for putting together that event, and, and I know you were working very closely with Nikki Dixon and Tamika Alexander to make this a very successful event. Tomorrow, if you are on campus, please come to the college. You will see two thousand students from our Pathways Program presenting their work after they've read the One Book, One College selection of Spearparts, and we will also have, in our section auditorium, the author of Spearparts, Joshua Davis, who will address the crowd. This Saturday, two of our students will be honored at the Asian and Pacific Islanders with Disabilities of California Second Annual Gala. They will be celebrating their twenty-fifth anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Our two students are Brian McGrath and Philbert Jong, and both of them are graduates of the APDIC's Youth Leadership Institute. And this weekend, I encourage you, or I encourage everyone present, to join in our third annual Million Meals Marathon. The event starts at about eleven AM on Saturday, and will go all night till Sunday morning, eleven AM, I, I believe, right? Okay? And finally, it is also good to note that we were just informed that our Center for the Arts Building, which was completed in two thousand twelve, has been selected as a winner of the American Architectural Award for this year, and this award is bestowed by the Chicago Athenaeum, the Museum of Architecture and Design, and the European Center for Architecture, Art Design, and Urban Studies. And we are very proud that with money from Measure P, we were able to build that wonderful center for the arts, which is now, and this is not the first award that this building wins, I believe this is the third award, but this one is perhaps one of the most prestigious award. And this concludes my report.
And that's a great, great, great accomplishment. Yeah, that's really good. Thank you, Dr. Verdine. Okay, this time, we will turn to announcement by Chair Governance, let's start from the Decade in the Senate.
Yes, so Dr. Foster apologizes for not being able to attend tonight. I'm Sheila Rose, the vice president, and Dr. Foster would like to everyone who was involved in the faculty hiring priorities process. She concurred with Dr. Verdine that it was an extremely collaborative and collegial process, and she really appreciated that. Dr. Foster and Stephanie Fleming and I attended the Fall Plenary for the statewide academic senate the past weekend, and we will be working with campus constituents to enact a lot of the resolutions that were passed. I attended a session on the transfer model curriculums that are being created for the AATs to the CSUs, and there are two that will be available on February first, Public Health Science and also Child and Adolescent Development. So we'll look into the possibility of interest in creating those majors here at PCC to allow our students to transfer in those majors. Currently under development are Environmental Science, Graphic Design, and Hospitality Management, and also Chem and Bio are due in September of two thousand sixteen. Something else that's being developed are areas of emphasis, so that students don't have to declare a major, and the ones that are currently under development are Social Justice Studies and Global Studies slash International Relations. So we'll be looking into whether our college is interested in developing those areas of emphasis. That's my report. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Okay, so we'll go to Management Association, Mr. Joseph.
Yes, and good evening to the board. First item I'd like to draw to your attention is the Management Association will be assisting the president's staff in this year's college-wide president's holiday celebration on December tenth from two to four PM. As in the past, the School of Visual Media and Performing Arts will be providing music, watch for the invitation. Secondly, the MA Board is in the final stages of planning for the association's annual retreat. A tentative agenda includes a professional development piece, which is still to be decided, and activity that asks the membership, in effect, what do we do and for whom do we do it, regarding personal and professional expectations for the new year. Lastly, we plan to highlight a roundtable discussion on the ways in which we, in our various capacities, seek to serve the needs of our students. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I will turn to Associated Students, Mr. Arvind Morales.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and public. First of all, I'm thankful to be here tonight. Some, some events that just happened, actually, these past days, we had two great events from our Associate Student Business Career Forum, and also making sure that we're healthier on not making sure, making our students aware of the cigarettes and tobacco use, and also something that we're working on with our ITAP Committee is making sure that, how can we work with Metro to see what changes we can do to get our tap card for all our students? I do want to thank trustee Wa, because I hear her all over the place, but she's, you know, advocate also for us. Thank you so much, because I guess we need a lot of support. Trustee Bond and I and our committee, also Rebecca Cobb, which is our Dean of Office of Student Life, is making sure that we hopefully can get the best for our students, because we're trying not to charge them as much as how Metro wants to charge us. Something that I really want to thank also, someone that I really want to thank is Dr. Olivo for hosting the student panel, it was three student panels, which, which was great, because it gave the opportunity for our staff to go to either or, and I went to the last two, which were great, because I know a lot of our students gave a lot of great opinions about the questions that they were asked, so thank you, Dr. Olivo. Also, Chair Governance Accreditation Committee was great today, I'm very thankful that the committee actually heard our student voices, which anything that I suggested, suggested they like, which I'm thankful for that, because making sure that our students' input is being heard is very great to hear. Please be attentive for our upcoming events from Associate Students, we have our Thanksgiving event next week, it's not only for international students to be aware that America has Thanksgiving and, you know, why we have it, but also for any student out there that wants to, you know, pet puppies, we're going to have that out there, we're going to have free food, free German food, and us all photo shoot, so Board of Trustees want to come and have some, some great German food and pet some puppies, you guys are more than welcome. We have holiday angels coming up, and also Relaxation Week, making sure our students have their Scantrons and some goodies to eat on their relaxation for the finals. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Just the.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight. So this past weekend, I was at General Assembly up in Sacramento, where I was able to observe our delegate vote on resolutions, which we'll see, you know, later throughout the year. I will be attending CCLC this, this weekend, starting tomorrow, and just an update on the Metro tap cards, there is discussion earlier in the meeting about what to cha, charge students if we do charge them. Hopefully, there will be a survey out to see how the students feel on this issue, because that's very important. We don't want to be charging them something they're not willing to pay, and just, just more, to just gather, gather more information to see where we are with, with the transportation issue, and hopefully, there will be some discussion at the CCLC where, where we can see or find a possible solution for that. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Savage.
Yeah, a couple of days ago, Dr. Olivo sent me an email about the program this morning on the dual enrollment, and asked me if I wanted to come by and, you know, take a look and see how it was run. It was very illuminating to hear what the students, and these were all from PUSD, and they were from Muir, of course, and some from Pasadena, what, Blair, Marshall, and was there another? Was there another high school?
PH.
Oh, I mentioned that.
Oh.
I think I did. Any case, it, it was very illuminating to hear what they were told, how the pitch was made to them, and some of the questions that they asked, but in particular, after a sort of initial pitch in the, in section where all of them were present, I went out with one of the groups that was sort of squired around campus, and, and hearing what their, their guides were saying, some of the things they were emphasizing, you know, particularly, you know, the application process, you know, you really appreciate what the application process might be to, well, I guess, fifteen, sixteen-year-old who's wanting to enter this program, and the kind of assistance they need, which we're going to provide. So, you know, that was great, and to hear some of the reactions as we went around to, you know, the art center, I gave a pitch to the art center. It was a great event.
Great, thank you. Justie Thompson.
Well, a week ago today, we had a very special celebration in front of Pasadena City Hall, and the Pasadena City College pep band with Jim Arnwein was very much a key. and the Pasadena City College pep band with Jim Arnwein was very much a key part of that, led by Mark Miller at the time. And they played the anthems of all the different branches of service, and it was a wonderful event all the way around. Dr. Selvage was there, Dr. Miller was there also, and may I miss anybody else? I don't think so. I think we're basically the ones who were there. But it was a very inspiring event. The keynote address was given by Lieutenant Colonel Karth Massey, who is a La Cuenca resident, more importantly, a few months ago became the commander of the 23rd Marine Division, which is located in Pasadena. And so, very knowledgeable, very inspiring. Hot dogs joined in by the Farmer Johns, and the firefighters took care of the buns and the relish and all that sort of stuff, and it was a great event. So all of you, put that on your calendar for next year, and get a free hot dog if nothing else.
Absolutely. Okay.
Great, great, great event, and PCC clearly is a key part of it, and people are very appreciative of that, very knowledgeable about it, and I've heard more compliments of just how well the college has done. So one of the things, I just wanted to, we've talked about it before, but, you know, the gala we had back in May of this year, one of the things that I've really enjoyed so much about being on the Board of Trustees of this college was to, along with my wife, be the chairs of that wonderful event and raise an excess of $1 million in money that will go for scholarships for PCC students. And so I think it'd be really nice if we'd get a report from Ms. Abram and the foundation as to how many scholarships they anticipate that being able to distribute. I know that information has already been provided, but I think to have a roundup of that would be very informative, very inspiring, and I would be very, very appreciative of it, so thank you.
Okay, Justine Martin?
None, thank you.
Justine Mann?
Well, I have, I have a couple of things. First of all, I, I guess everyone knows, but I do want to announce that Jeffrey Baum, who's a former trustee here, was elected president of the Board of Governors again for another year term. That's very, very good for Pasadena City College. This is a, a real honor. I think he has shown a great deal of leadership. The, the function of actually the Board of Governors, I think, has changed significantly. First of all, when Dr. Scott, who was the president of Pasadena City College, was chancellor, and then having someone like Mr. Baum on the board who, who kind of knows how to get things done. And the other thing I wanted to announce, although I'm sure you're all aware of this, the Board of Governors did vote to direct the chancellor to begin exploring options for a different accreditation association. And there's been several articles and editorials about this in the paper. The Times had a kind of a lukewarm editorial, but, but obviously, what it means is that a process, and this is what Jeff said, I talked with him yesterday, you know, a process is beginning, and it will take a lot of time, no matter what happens. And if what everyone, of course, ideally would be that the Accreditation Association that we have would, would become not quite so punitive, but I think this is very, this is a very significant move, whether the Accreditation Association changes the way it reviews colleges, or whether the chancellor's office actually affects a move to a different association.
Thank you. Justine Wall?
Yes, I attended the Board of Governors meeting in January. I was the trustee, the, the lead trustee representative. So as Dr. Mann said, there was a lot of discussion on ACCJC. I reported out last month that the Board of Governors had approved that, but there was still testimony to come at the last meeting on Monday. You know, and I, I think that there was a lot of discussion on whether or not this meant that the, whatever accreditation agency had should change, and it's not so much that, because actually, the ACCJC had been mandated to be much more definitive and about directions or directives to the colleges that they were accrediting. But I think the issue that was actually discussed was, do, could they do it in a way that would be more helpful to the colleges, that would enable them or empower them to actually do better and not just be punitive? So that was a lot of the discussion that happened on Monday. So many of you also received the, the notice from the League, as well as from the chancellor's office, that the Workforce Development Task Force recommendations, the 25 recommendations, were unanimously approved. And there was just really, just resounding unanimous support for this. I mean, this, we had great testimony, and I just want to read a couple of statistics that were given by the Young Invincibles, who were, who participated on the Workforce Task Force with us. For the Millennials, the Millennials make up 37% of our workforce. We have, the Millennials comprise the highest number of degree population, but also the highest number of unemployment out of our groups. 80% of the high school seniors saw job opportunities as being the primary reason to go to college. And over 70% of the CTE participants pursued higher education shortly after graduating from high school. And so one of, since we talked about FON, one of the things that was discussed is, with the money that's going to be coming in for CTE, we expect that money to also change to help increase FON, to also not have this bifurcation of the academic versus the CTE, that we have greater, this will bring greater diversity to our staff. So I think that there are a lot of good opportunities for us as a college to look at, and I think a lot of hope for our young millennials who we are putting out in the workforce. So also, one of the things that happened at the BOG was the previous president, Dr. Manny Baca, was given a resolution of honor to, for his work on the BOG and in education. So that was a happy event, although I was not able to attend it. So as was said, the CCLC, the League, will be having their conference, actually, it starts today, over in Burlingame. And so the API, African-American, and the Veterans Caucuses will be having the first joint reception, and we will have a first, our first joint business meeting to look at issues that are common to all of the caucuses that we can work on. So those of you who will be in Burlingame, I hope you will come to the reception and have a chance to network with everyone. And I want to remind everyone, oh, and the other thing that we're going to do is, the transit issue will be one of the things that trustee Eng from LACC D, trustee Jaffe from Santa Monica, and I will be advocating among the regional trustees of LA County, as well as the state. And we also think that there's an opportunity for us to gain support through the K-12s on, through LAKSTA, because of the dual enrollment nexus. So as we have more high school students coming into college, transit pass is, also translates to access to education. So we think that's a great opportunity. And I want to remind everyone that on this coming Monday, the API Advisory will be having a reception for Dr. Verdian. I know you're probably really tired of all these receptions, but this is also an opportunity for the community to come to the Rosemead Center and to learn more about Rosemead, as well as Dr. Verdian's reception. So I invite everyone to come. They'll be starting their press conference at 4:30, and then the reception will follow at 5:00.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I guess we'll be seeing Dr. Verdian down at Rosemead. Okay, so now we will turn to, let's see, where are we? Proposed future board business meetings, that our next meeting will be December 9. And it's going to be our organizational meeting and regular business meeting. So, proposed future, future agenda items, do we have any? No future agenda items? No? Okay. So I guess at this point, we will adj-